It is 6:00 PM on Tuesday, January 17th, 2023. I will call this meeting of the Miami Township Montgomery County Board of Trustees to order. If you could please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Morris.
Here.
Mr. Posey.
Here.
Mr. Cole.
Here.
Chief Stegelmeyer, you have military and first responder casualties.
Good evening, Board. The following is the first responder casualty list for the period of January the 4th through January the 17th of 2023. Deputy Sheriff Darnell Calhoun, Riverside County Sheriff's Department, California. End of watch, January 13th, 2023.
If everyone could please join me in recognizing a moment of silence. We have two presentations and guests. I would welcome from RTA, Mr. Brandon Polachico?
Polachico.
Oh, Polachico, I just missed part of it.
I've gotten Pinocchio before, which that one I was, I kind of see it, but not really, you know. Good evening, trustees. Thank you for having me here. My name's Brandon Polachico. I'm the Chief Customer and Business Development Officer for the Greater Dayton RTA and wanted to provide a few updates on what's happening with the RTA and primarily here within Miami Township. So we are currently over 500 employees serving the entire area of Montgomery County with public transportation. Over 65% of our customers on a daily basis are using our service to get to jobs, followed by healthcare and educational opportunities. I'm sure you've seen the commercials on TV here and there, but we are hiring drivers. We're close to 80 drivers short right now of where we need to be, so that's of high importance to us so that we're able to reestablish some of our services, which include some of those here in the township as well. This year, we're celebrating and kicked off in 20, last year, our 50th anniversary. Yes, if you've lived in Montgomery County long enough, we, yes, we've been on the road for more than 50 years. This is the 50th anniversary of the Greater Dayton RTA. There's been many previous names to the Public Transportation Agency here, but for the Greater Dayton RTA, this year celebrates our 50th anniversary. One thing that's changed with, within the recent years is the way that our customers pay when they get onboard our vehicles. Beginning in 2019, we introduced our new payment system called Tap Pay. What is unique about this system compared to what we previously utilize is that we no longer have traditional daily and monthly passes for our customers. What we introduced was called fare capping, and the benefit to this for our customers is unlike traditional transit passes where those who might be unbanked, underbanked, low-income, often were getting onboard every day, paying for a one-way trip or paying for a day pass, by the end of the month, they ended up spending more money than those who could afford to purchase a monthly passes upfront. With our new system, we're able to cap a max amount that an individual pays on a daily basis and conversely, a monthly basis. So what this does is it allows customers to keep their money longer and allows those who may not have the means to buy a monthly pass upfront still get that deal of what a monthly pass rate is. This has also allowed us to the ability to take off cash handling from our vehicles. We still do accept cash as a form of payment to turn into value on your Tap Pay card or through your smartphone. We've also been able to allow this to have family accounts as well, where an individual could have multiple people riding under the same account. And then finally, this year, we're going to introduce contactless payments. Some of you may have seen new debit and credit cards with that little Wi-Fi symbol on the back. Customers will eventually be able to utilize their contactless debit or smart card or even Google Pay and Android Pay when they get on the bus and still have that fare capping. It'll just apply to their personal payment card, so at some point, they won't even have to utilize a app or our RTA Tap Pay card. In terms of our services, we have 18 bus routes currently through the entire Montgomery County area, over 2,500 bus stops. We have several different what are called connect programs, which I'll share about here. And just recently, we started offering the same service seven days a week. So right now, there is not much of a difference when you travel Monday as you would on a Sunday. What we've noticed from the pandemic, as well as what our customers have always been asking for, was for more weekend ridership, and we've definitely seen some improvements since we've issued a seven-day same-service week schedule. The connect programs I mentioned earlier, one of them is here within the township on demand. We've had this program in place since 2017. What this program does is instead of utilizing a traditional green bus like you've seen through partnerships we have with Uber or Lyft, as well as our smaller white vehicles, we provide door-to-door transportation in specific zones throughout the county. We have a total of four zones within the county, and one is here with, in the township area. Customers can either call us, and we can directly book them to an Uber or Lyft, or one of our vehicles, or they can go directly to the Lyft or Uber app. The service is free of charge, and over 70% of our customers are utilizing this service before or after they use one of the bigger buses, which is the intention of the service is to create what's called a first-and-last-mile connection. This service is very popular within this area. It's been very useful. Where in the past, we had some bus routes running through this area, but they had extremely limited services, maybe once in the morning, once in the evening, not very good frequencies. This service is offered during the same timeframes at our regular buses route, but the customer can use it when they need it versus a traditional bus route, which is on a time schedule. So this has been very critical for some of the areas within the township. Our other program is paratransit. You might have heard of it referred to as Project Mobility. Those are the white vehicles that you see driving around. Those are for customers who may have a cognitive or physical disability that prevents them from utilizing the green bus service. They apply with us, and then they have the ability to have that service for them. That is offered countywide to any eligible customer. And just over the past year, we've implemented what's called the 5310 program. There's some funding we were able to receive through the Federal Transit Administration. We're able to provide highly subsidized trips to individuals who are 65 and older, primarily older adults, and persons with disabilities throughout Montgomery County that are traveling to specific locations like hospital, grocery store, or pharmacy. So if any of you have taken Uber, Lyft, or any of those services before, it's definitely a really good deal at $5 per trip versus those rates. But the good news is, is that it's open to anybody as long as they're 65 and older or have a disability and getting them to those critical locations. So we've seen great usage of that program since it's first started. More information can be found on our website with those three programs, or simply by calling us. Customers can be connected with the service that's most appropriate for what they need. Finally, in terms of the township, the services that we have here today are Route 6, 17, 18, and 19. Connecting certain areas to buses, I use, I put the Route 6 up there just to show what the connections are with the 17, and then you can see that on-demand service I mentioned area, that area is that Zone 1, covering that location there. These are the current services that touch portions of the township. So what about the future? We've had some of the same services here, and they've changed in the township over the year. I want, I appreciate Alex and his team. We met with them a couple of weeks ago. We were able to get updated on some of the economic development and activities in the township. And over the course of the next couple of weeks, our board, just this morning actually, gave us the green light to roll out our proposed changes to our services throughout the county. What these changes are going to do is address the changes that we've seen in ridership, changes in economic development activity as a result of the pandemic. Obviously, what we had originally designed in our system plans that we had for 2019, the pandemic changed all of that. So what we're doing is we're reaching out to the different jurisdictions such as yourselves, our customers again, and finding out where is the economic development happening, where do our customers need to go. We were informed of some of the activities, and that drastically changed following our meeting, where we're going to be looking at some of our bus route services traveling within the township, which I think is very positive, some of the things that I heard. So we'll definitely be seeing an uptick of more bus route service in certain sections of the township, but also to maintaining this connect on-demand service, which has seemed to be very popular because a lot of sections of the township aren't necessarily accessible by a big bus. It's requiring walking to retail locations, so that on-demand service is really there to help people to bridge that kind of gap where maybe walking isn't necessarily a choice in terms of reaching a certain location. So we're definitely going to be reaching out again, sharing that with Alex and his team, making sure we're in alignment with what's seen here, but we're really excited to put this information out, and we do think it will be positive. And with that, that concludes my presentation.
Any questions for Brandon?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if you could tell us what percentage, what's your budget? What percentage of the annual budget's made up by fares and what makes up the difference?
So our, our fare revenues can be anywhere from 10% to 15% of our total revenues. Well over 60%, 60% of our revenues come from the half-cent sales tax that we have here within Montgomery County, followed by the rest is made up of federal and state funds.
Any other questions?
I have a couple of questions. You mentioned your 80 drivers short. What qualifies someone to be a driver? I presume there's some level of testing and certification above just a driver's license, or am I wrong there?
So, so yes, you definitely have to have a driver's license as a start. If you want to drive the bigger buses, we provide CDL training to get you your CDL permit. There's no charge to that. Depending on the individual, a high school degree might not even be required. We have some that do not have a high school degree that drive the bus. So that's really all that's needed, a valid driver's license, a good driving record, and we look at other things such as background checks and things like that. But we do fully pay for the CDL training for any driver who'd wish to do that. The other, the smaller white vehicles don't require a CDL, but there is a training program that's in place for that. That's about four to six weeks. And then our larger vehicles, which require the CDL, is about eight to 10 weeks of training.
Thank you for that. This public-private partnership that you have with Lyft and Uber seems to be rather unique. Can you tell me a little bit more about how that works? So I'm not on a bus route, or the bus isn't coming to me. How do I take advantage of this opportunity? Because I presume what you're saying is that you'll pay for a Lyft or Uber to take me to the hub. Is that correct?
So, correct. So the way the program works is as long as a customer is traveling within the zone, they don't necessarily have to transfer to a hub or to a bus route or anything like that. We've just, it just happens that a lot of the customers are using that to connect to the larger bus route network in that area. We reach out through customers onboard our vehicles in different areas. The way it works in the app is if you pull up the Uber or Lyft app and you're in that area, it recognizes that you're in, once you put in a start and end destination, it'll recognize that you're in one of the RTA zones, and then you can apply that fare discount to it, which makes it zero when you're traveling in that area. For those customers who maybe don't have a smartphone, they can contact us, or those customers that maybe need a Lyft-equipped vehicle because they have an accessibility need, we provide that transportation to those customers, because obviously Lyft and Uber is limited in what they can do from that perspective. But it's available when our buses are running. There's no limit to the amount of trips an individual can take per day either.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you for coming in and sharing all this information with us.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Chief Stegelmeyer, we have a police levy presentation.
I have never used your PowerPoint here, so hopefully we can get through this as quickly and as efficiently as possible. Good evening, Board. I'm here to talk on behalf of a police service levy that we're proposing to the board this evening. If you remember, several meetings ago, we came forward to you, and Clay McCord asked for your approval to get some mileage certifications through the Auditor's Office here in Montgomery County. And during that time, we started at the range of 5.25 and went all the way to 6.25. And we did receive those mileage evaluations back from the Auditor's Office during that period of time until today. Myself, Mr. Snyder, and Mr. McCord have had several meetings trying to decipher, A, what the future needs of the department, what's going to be, what the current needs are going to be, and what's the most cost-effective way to get there. After much talks back and forth, we have come up with a proposal, what we feel would be the best possible way for the police services and the Police Department to benefit in the future levy. And this slide, so hopefully, will help illustrate why we're going to make this proposal to you. So what we're proposing is a new levy. It would be a 5.75 levy. And what these funds would be used for, let's take it right from the start. What this would help us do, it'd help the Police Department maintain its current police service levels. It would also allow us for future expansion of personnel if so needed. It would allow the Police Department to keep pace with inflation and an increasing demand for police services. It enables the township to benefit from new construction, which underneath this present levy, we are not getting any benefit from. And it provides something that we much need, and that's a reliable funding source that adds some stability to the Police Department. So let's talk about the police levy information. Currently, the expiring levy costs the present homeowner $127.77 per $100,000 value, house value. The 5.75 levy would cost that same homeowner $201.25 per $100,000 house value. What that equates to is it's going to cost the property owner $73.48 more annually per $100,000 evaluation, or $6.12 underneath this new proposed levy. Now, what's this mean? What's this all equate to? Let's talk about the price of policing and how, like everything else in society, the price of policing definitely has gone up over the years. Cost-effective police services. Police services for the Miami Township Police Department provided through two property tax levies that are approved by the voters on every offset year, every five years. The Police Department uses these funds to pay for police officers, purchase equipment, day-to-day operations, and replace cruisers, and pays for training. Currently, the Police Department has a minimum staffing level of at least three officers and one supervisor on day watch, four officers and at least a supervisor for afternoon watch, three officers and a sergeant for midnight shift, and a day shift power car and an afternoon shift power car. These officers have responded to over 29,130 calls for service in the calendar year of 2022. That averages to 1,387 calls per officer. Quite a workload. Let's talk about our detective section, something I'm extremely proud of. The Miami Township Police Department currently has a detective bureau that consists of five detectives and one detective sergeant. In 2022, the detective bureau handled 627 cases. This is an average of 125 cases investigated per detective. This is what I'm, this is what I'm most proud of. The detective bureau prides itself on the hard work they do, and last year, they had a case clearance rate of 68%. If you look at the national case clearance rate across the nation, it averages 31.4%, or double what the national case clearance record is. Something to be extremely proud of, of the guys in this generation at this day and time. In 2019, Washington Township put a police levy on, and as part of their informational packet, they did a cost-per-capita study of the southern police agencies and jurisdictions here in Montgomery County and one in Warren County. Their numbers at this point in time try to measure what these jurisdictions were paying per officer, per resident, and what, these are the figures that came out in their study. The City of Centerville is presently paying $308 per capita cost for a police officer. City of Kettering is paying $264. The City of Miami is paying $401. Springbrough is paying $189, and Washington Township is paying $139. Today, using last year's figures, that is based on the population from our last census and what we spent in our budget last year, Miami Township is presently spending $202 per cost capita. If you do the average of all the agencies I just spoke about, that comes out to an average of $250 per capita cost per officer. And again, I'm going to reiterate, we're at 202. So we're being cost-effective. We're doing our share of trying to make everything as fiscally prudently possible. So let's talk about policing, again, the price of policing. If you can take a look at the cost, police vehicle cruisers. We have 33 marked cruisers. I'm not going to even mention the unmarked cars that we have in our fleet. It takes about 33 marked cruisers for you to maintain patrol. Each one, to outfit that and put it on the street is about $85,000. The, if you're looking at your monitors, the figure on the right, the schematic on your right breaks it down, the cruiser cost itself, the annual gas, the annual maintenance, computer, radio, body camera, et cetera, and that gives you a running total. Presently, we're rotating these cars at about a 68-year pace. Just to tell you what the cost of policing has increased just in two years. If you remember back in 2020, I came to you and asked for authorization to purchase six Dodge Durangas to help replace an aging Ford fleet. When we did, when you authorized that, I purchased those in February 21st of 2020. The cost for those six cars were $241,110. In 2022, I came to you in early 2022 with another proposal to, again, replace six cars for the other half of the fleet that's aging. Again, we went to try to bid out Dodge Durangas. That price rose in two years to $341,436. A two-year inflation rate of over $100,000. That's the cost of policing, whether you want to believe that or not. So let's continue with an officer cost. Sworn police officers, we presently have 37 sworn officers on our police department. The cost to hire a patrol officer is approximately $111,349. That's at the very minimum. I'm not counting what it costs to train them in their field training period. That's not what it costs some of the other ancillary costs, the background investigation, the cost to onboard them. This is just what it costs to give me a guy in uniform and basically equip them. That's per officer. What will the new levy that we're proposing bring to us? So if we pass this 5.75 levy, if you authorize this and the voters pass this, it would generate an extra $893,065 for the Police Department. What would we propose this money would be used for? Let's take a look at our bullet points. Number one, I'd like to hire four new officers. I'm going to dedicate them to putting boots on the ground. We have some specialty areas that we'd like to explore with our special operations unit. We would target high crime areas and insert these officers to keep crime rates at low. I would backfill task force officers that I've had to pull out of our task force to augment our road patrol due to just personnel that we've lost over the years. We'd replace capital items. Continuing cruisers, we have building upgrades that need to be done in the men's locker room. We have a roof on our building that's going to need replaced in the next year or so. We have older equipment that has rotational every three to five years, and that would be MDTs in our cruisers. Portable radios, the little portable radio that I have on my desk that costs $6,500 a piece, times 40. Tasers, we have 40-something tasers for each officer. Those rose from the price of around $2,600 to $3,800 a piece in one year. All these costs that we have to start absorbing, and if we don't get an additional way to raise revenue, we're going to have to find other ways to cut back. Duty firearms, these are things that all have rotational and shelf life, that we have to start making a long-term plan to start replacing these out. And finally, replenish the stabilization fund. Our stabilization fund within the Police Department has been, has been slowly dwindling over the years to help offset some of the costs that we're unable to keep up in any other way. In 2022, I enlisted the help of Joe Drury, and we put a citizen's survey out through the use of Survey Monkey. And we did this just on the township website. We had a very minimal response, which was, which was okay. I just wanted to, it was a touch and feel to see kind of what the gauge of the township was. I was very satisfied with the results, and if you, in your packet, you should have the majority of that survey, but I'll give you a couple of the highlights that made me extremely proud. 89% of the respondents were very satisfied or satisfied with our police services. 93% were very satisfied or satisfied with our community outreach programs. 84% of the respondents felt safe living in the township. But I think the biggest thing that really jumps out at me is almost unanimously, the biggest thing that everybody wanted to see was more officers on patrol. The only way to accomplish this is we have to have, increase our funding revenue. As you know, personnel costs are typically anywhere between 85% and 87% of all budgets for public service. Let's talk about additional funding sources. Besides our police property levies, I also have an additional couple revenue generators. That would be through the forfeitures and our state grants and federal grants. Let me address each one of these for you. Forfeitures come from our task force officers, and if you heard me earlier, I've had to pull my task force officers back to augment our road patrol due to manpower issues. With the people being off the task forces, this forfeiture revenue stream is going to be dry. It has dried up. I'm not going to have any new of those revenues coming in anytime soon. State grants and federal grants. We have two, we have a state grant right now for bulletproof vests that help offsets the cost of outfitting my officers for bulletproof vests, and a federal grant that also helps that. We also have a federal grant that pays for traffic safety overtime. Now, anybody that's been in any type of public service long enough or state government knows that these funding sources can dry up at any point in time. They're not a guaranteed source of revenue. So these can become problematic for me to do any type of long-term planning with any type of certainty. What will this new levy accomplish if we get it passed and if you approve this? Well, it gives us a long-term dependable funding source. It will help us improve coverage and response times during high-call-volume periods. It allows the Police Department to be more self-sufficient. What I mean by that is it will allow us to make long-term plans. We can predict what's going to happen in the future. We can be less reliant on other government entities to help with our revenue, revenue, or any type of revenue to help with the Police Department. It will maintain our competitiveness in recruiting and retaining the best officer to serve this community. Where in the middle of contract times, police, the cost of policing has increased. In order to maintain good quality people, to have a good quality service, we have to pay our employees. Everybody knows that. You can go down to anywhere else right now, you can go to a Target, you can go anywhere else, and they're paying people to sit there and be greeters, $16 to $20 an hour. So with this kind of, out in the workforce, you have to pay people that want to do a job that nobody wants to do right now. It helps us increase the visibility of officers within the community, improve our ability to participate on crime prevention task forces. I'm going by our survey. The people want to see officers in the neighborhood. They want an officer to show up at their house when they call for help. They want to feel safe. They want to see that person as a safety blanket, and I can't blame them for that. And it will also, it will help us fund upcoming capital improvements in the next time to come. I'll be glad to answer any questions if you have.
Any questions for the chief? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Cole.
Aye.
New business. Chief Stegelmeyer, you have a motion for a liquor permit. Thai table.
Yes, Board. In your packet, I have given you a transfer request from Southwest LLC, doing businesses Or Taco and Patio at 2335 Miami'sburg Cinema Road, to the Thai Kitchen. With this is a transfer of a D5 and a D6 liquor license. And to give the board a little background, a D5 is spirituous liquor for on-premises consumption only, beer, wine, and mixed beverages for on-premises or off-premises, and originally sealed container until 2:30. And the D6 is a sale of intoxicating liquor on Sunday between the hours of 10:00 AM or 11:00 AM and midnight. The Police Department has no problem with this, and we find no reason for it to be denied. I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have.
You also have Resolution 7-2023, a resolution on declaring surplus property.
Again, Board, what I, in your packet, I've given you a memo about some surplus vehicles we have. We have three of our older detective vehicles that have outlived their capacity with this, and we're asking the board to declare these surplus so we can trade them in for newer vehicles to help us with our, update our fleet. And we're going to use some of these, actually, we'll be trading these vehicles in, and they're going to help us with purchasing the new cars.
Any questions on Resolution 7? You just mentioned the word "trade-in," so you've determined that trading them in is of better value than auctioning them through the Gov Deal site?
The trade-in value, we're going to put one on Gov bid, on Gov bids due to the fact it was a salvage title. It was a forfeiture vehicle, so that was not able to trade in. The trade-in value of these cars were the high end of the NIDA book, if I'm saying that correctly, Kelly's Blue Book. So that's a guaranteed price where the Gov deals is not a guaranteed price, so we made sure that we were doing due diligence and getting the most out of the cars that we could, and that's why we decided to go with the trade-in for those two vehicles.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Mr. Schweickert, you have Resolution 8.
Yeah, good evening, Board. This is an annual resolution to certify the roadway mileage from 2022, excuse me, per the Ohio Revise Code. We did not have any additional roadway mileage added, so it comes to a consistent 91.66 for 2022, and I'd be happy to answer any questions for this resolution.
Seeing none, Mr. Carlson, you have Resolutions 9 and 10.
Good evening, Board. Resolution 9 is a resolution that we bring before you each year to authorize the Township Administrator to enter into an agreement with Montgomery County Microfilming Board. We store and house all of our stock microfilm, the originals of all of our microfilm rolls for historic zoning certificates and zoning commission and BZA cases. We are evaluating a future plan to potentially discontinue this service, but we are not confident at the moment that we have perfect digital records of all historic originals, so we're going to maintain them until we feel confident that we have that. So we are evaluating that plan, but for now, recommend that we would continue that agreement going into 2023. And then Resolution 10, staff received notice, one of our zoning commission members, that they were resigning their position on the commission. So I brought for you a resolution to accept the resignation of the commission member. Another item, staff is evaluating among our existing commission members, BZA members, placements on the board for the regular placements on the board for the regular membership, after which staff will likely post, as we have done before, an open resume period for any residents of the township who are interested in sitting on one of our zoning boards. If there are any questions, be happy to answer.
Mr. McCord, you have Resolutions eleven and twelve.
Yes, good evening, Board. Resolution eleven dash two thousand and twenty-three is an appropriation amendment for two thousand and twenty-three. There have been some new, information's come to light since we compiled the budgets in the middle of the fourth quarter of last year. I believe we've communicated that in separate meetings in the past several weeks, and so this is just to shore up and give us the authorization to go ahead and proceed with those plans. And Resolution twelve is to formally address and ask for a consideration of placing a replacement with increase levy on the May second ballot. Charlie got to do the presentation on the whys and the wheres, and I get to bring the actual resolution forward for you. I'd be happy to answer any questions if I can.
Yeah, that resolution in the board packet had a number of blanks. Could you articulate what either Mr. Chief Stigelmeier or the staff recommendation is for the completion of those blanks with the five-point-seven-five-mill levy?
The five, the staff recommendation was to replace the five-point-two-five-mill levy and with an increase of point-five mils for a total mileage of five-point-seven-five mils, which equates to, as Chief pointed out, to two dollars, two hundred and one dollars and twenty-five cents, I believe, per hundred thousand dollars of valuation on the tax duplicate.
And that would be for a continuous term?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yes, that would be for continuing. That was the other change that we were proposing was instead of going every five years, this would establish a continuing levy that would, could be changed at any point in time through voter action or interaction from this to replace it, similar to what we did with the fire district levy, the fire levies of last year. So it's just to not have to keep going back every five years, voter fatigue, for some other reasons. Some other jurisdictions in the area are going to this method where they have a continuing and a renewal, or repeating.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, I will open the meeting for public comments. This is the portion where any member of the public can come forward and address the members of the Board of Trustees. Is there anyone from the public wishing to come forward? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period, move to consideration of resolutions and motions. I will make a motion to approve the liquor permit for Thai Table. Is there a second?
I will second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Colb.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve Resolution zero-zero-seven dash two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution to declare surplus property and authorize the sale of said property. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Colb.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution zero-zero-eight dash two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution to certify township highway millage for two thousand and twenty-two. Is there a second?
clarifying that as mileage, I will second.
Mileage? Hey, now I know how to read. Thank you, sir. Any discussion?
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Colb.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve Resolution nine dash two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution to authorize the township administrator to execute the necessary documents to secure an agreement with the Montgomery County Microfilming Board. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Colb.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve Resolution ten dash two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution to accept the resignation of a zoning commissioner, of a zoning commission member, Mr. William Kelly. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Colb.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve Resolution eleven dash two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution to approve amendments to the appropriation of funds for two thousand and twenty-three. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Colb.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution number twelve dash two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution declaring it necessary to levy a replacement with an increase of an existing tax levy and requesting the county auditor to certify matters in connection therewith. Therefore, be it resolved by two, at least two-thirds of the members of the Miami Township, excuse me, the Board of Trustees of the township, jumping to Section two. The question of the adoption of a replacement of an existing five-point-two-five-mill levy with an increase of zero-point-five mils for each one dollar of tax valuation, which amounts to a total of two hundred and one dollars and twenty-five cents per one hundred thousand dollars of the county auditor's appraised value for a continuing period shall be submitted to the electors of the unincorporated territory of the township at the election held on May second, two thousand and twenty-three. The existing five-point-two-five-mill levy amounts to one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents for one hundred thousand dollars of the county auditor's appraised value. If approved by the electors, said continuing replacement with an increased levy shall first be placed on the two thousand and twenty-three tax list and duplicate for the first collection in calendar year two thousand and twenty-four. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
We have to read Section three and four.
Okay, I will amend my motion by reading Section three, that the territory of the township is located in Montgomery County only and that the tax is to be levied on the unincorporated territory of the township. Section four, that pursuant to Section fifty-seven oh five oh three of the Revised Code, the auditor of Montgomery County, Ohio, county auditor, is hereby requested certified to this board that the current tax valuation of the unincorporated territory of the township and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by five-point-seven-five mils, and the fiscal officer of this board be and here, is hereby directed to certify forthwith a copy of this resolution to the county auditor as required by law so that said county auditor may certify such matters in accordance with Section fifty-seven oh five oh three of the Revised Code. Now, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Colb.
Aye.
All right, we have no public hearings. We have Department head comments? All quiet today. All right, back to you, Mr. Snyder.
Okay. I do just want to note for the board, I will be attending the OTA conference next week, towards the end of the week, so I will be in Columbus at least for a couple of days up there. Also, as we will not be meeting again until February seventh, I did want to note that February first, two thousand and twenty-three is the twenty-fifth anniversary of Ohio Township Day. So we will put some information out on social media regarding Ohio Township Day from that, so. And then just finally, wanted to thank the chief for all the work that he's done in putting the presentation together tonight. Obviously, we have a lot of good plans that we would like to pursue with our police department to continue to address the needs of the residents in Miami Township. And we will see how the voters choose to decide on this particular option, but obviously, we'll, we'll look forward to that election and see what the outcome of that is and move forward, so. That's all I have at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. Elected official comments, Mr. Klingerman.
Yes, I'd like to also re-read, I will be going to the OTA conference here in Columbus as well. And also, I wanted to thank, no, she's not here, Erica Priest for helping me through some orientation issues, and of course, Clay McCord for mentoring me through some of the responsibilities that I'll be taking. I know that will be an ongoing process as well, but thanks to him as well.
Mr. Colb.
Yeah, I have none.
Mr. Posey.
Yeah, I just want to say it's always a challenge bringing a new levy for new funds onto the ballot, but I do appreciate the information brought forward by the chief in terms of what these funds will be used for, what we're presently not having, and what we can compare ourselves with some of our local neighbors in terms of what's spent on police department. The trustees bringing forth a new levy is not a statement that we think that you need to pay this amount. It's a statement that we believe that the electors in the township are appropriate to decide for themselves whether, what type of police department they want to have and how much funding they want it to have. It's our job to make sure the information is out there. It's the voter's job to decide how they want to fund their police department. And so I do, like I said, I appreciate the effort put forth by township administration and Chief Stigelmeier in developing that material so that we all have a better understanding.
Thank you, I have no comments. We are going to have a work session, a presentation by Mr. TJ. Is that just White? Yeah, TJ White, an easy name, I can get that one. On the Center for Local Government, so we are going to enter in work session, and we're going to stay in this room for this presentation. So I will make a motion to go into work session at six forty. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Colb.
Aye.
Mr. White.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you for inviting me up here today. I was asked by Mr. Snyder to review all of the Center for Local Government to determine whether or not, either now or in the future, the township might want to just pay a new provision. The Center for Local Government is a five-year, non-profit. It was formed by city managers and county administrators in southwest Ohio for the purpose of providing information sharing, shared services opportunities, and training local governments in southwest Ohio. We were formed in nineteen ninety due to a recognized need to have a clearinghouse organization for local government collaboration. We're a membership-driven organization. Roughly ninety percent of our annual budget comes from membership dues, and I would hit on the structure of those dues from the territory. We originally formed by and for local government staff. We are managed by five local government staff. My board is made up of five city managers and township administrators from around the region. They are elected by participating sixty-one members of the center. I would also say the vast majority of the services that we provide are services that either came out of recommendations from our member governments or services that were identified as a potential opportunity for governments to collaborate around a regional problem. We generally identify those throughout regions. I have sixty-one members. We try to interview roughly about forty to sixty of them per year in order to identify what regional issues may benefit from collaborative efforts. We have sixty-one members across the region, as I said, and although most of our members are in the Cincinnati area, there's a significant presence in the Dayton area as well. This includes Springboro, Carwell, Washington Township, Belville, Clayton, Miami's third, H. Pop. And the last, just general about, I would say before I get into the programmatic side of things, is we operate a very lean organization. Our budget is roughly only two hundred thousand dollars a year, and we only have staff of two part-time, one, sorry, two full-time and one part-time. We tend to operate through identifying partnerships with other organizations and partnerships with other service delivery agencies. What kind of services do we provide to members? I believe that I provided a programs and services list to everyone in the packet, and what I would like to do is hit on a few of the highlights. First of all, all programs that we provide are voluntary. Governments can choose which to join, to join none at all, or just use us or something like training and information sharing. Although some programs have conditions on joining, we try to design our services at the maximum level of governance conditions. There are no costs to program participation. Outside of the membership dues, really the only additional costs that governments pay us would be tuition for our leadership academy if you send a person to the leadership academy, which is roughly six hundred and fifty dollars. Training tuitions, which run between ten and thirty dollars to pay speakers or people. Or if you're at the beginning of a training process, for example, or multi-government solid waste, we would evenly split the pay. Outside of that, our budget is almost entirely operated through membership dues. There are some compensation obligations. In addition to the annual dues, we would want each government to fill out an annual directory page. We will ask for context for our spot survey list, our training distribution list, and our pay data lists. And we would ask that you fill out our annual survey. This is a survey where we track benefits and pay from across the region in order to draw out benchmark information. Two thousand and twenty-three programs and services, and on some of the major ones. Our, probably our most prominent and major service is a health insurance program. This is a self-insured pool that has twenty local governments in it currently. We were very proud that we have had zero percent cost increases in the pool for the last two years. Like I said, all of our programs are governed by the communities, and the self-insured pool is no different. So that has its own board. The village manager, Amberly Village, Ohio, is the board chair. Mrs. City Manager of Springdale, Ohio, is the vice chair. And we work with a broker, HRAN, in order to identify the best benchmark administrator and best benchmark structures. We have a judge rarely used in force virtual reality training system. This is actually one of our oldest programs. And this is a portable, fully immersive VR headset training system for decision-making for police and public safety officers. Southwest Ohio Regional Refuge Consortium is a multi-government solid-based recycling bit. We actually have three of those contracts. In the Dayton area, we have a contract that includes Elville, Riddell, and I. Two. And then our public works mutual aid. This is a multi-governmental contract essentially to provide a structure for mutual aid for public work emergencies, things such as tornadoes on the high end. Or honestly, the last time it was utilized was for a small community who had a snowplow that broke down, something simple like that. And in the area, actually, Washington Township and Springboro, we participate there. We also have a joint electricity purchase for government facilities program, Treasury Asset Management Consortium, which is a multi-government bid to identify investment factors. And a traffic calming lending thing for public safety agencies to share best practices and equipment when they are trying to do traffic calming projects. Finally, training, our major training program is the Center for Local Government Leadership Academy. Well, Mr. Snyder, I'm Mr. Carlson, or actually, Carlson, sorry. Our leadership academy graduates from two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two respectively. Outside of that, we provide one-term series of resources professionals for administrative professionals, and then we tend to identify urgent topics in local government where there might be a need for training and professional development as the year goes on. We're by those as well. And then the last thing I'll hit on is our information sharing. We track pay ranges for roughly one hundred and twenty different positions. We have an annual survey where we track benefits and pay practices as well as insurance data. We conduct seventy spot surveys a year, which are really anecdotal surveys on any issue a government might be having to essentially hedge their benchmarks. To hit on the structure briefly of the Center for Local Government, as I stated, we are a non-profit. My board is made up of city managers and township administrators. The current board is Jack Cameron from the Village of Silverton as president, Vicky Earhart, the administrator of Anderson Township, Hamilton County's vice president, Jim Lucas from the city of Sharonville as secretary treasurer, Amanda Severlin from the city of Clayton, and Mike Ray Hall from the village of Clues. And the last thing I would hit on are dues and partnerships. The average dues that a member pays to be in the center is three thousand eight hundred twenty-five dollars per year. However, that varies based on the size of the budget. We have two counties who pay seventy-five hundred, and then either you're paying thirty-eight, twenty-five, two thousand, or twelve hundred, twenty-five dollars depending on the size of the property and the budget. We have a training partnership with the Miami Federal Communications Council and the Miami Federal Risk Management Association in Dayton, Internet, which in addition to our training opportunities, we're able to access their training opportunities as well. And then the last thing I will hit on is that we are an organization that was really developed by and for staff. So if Miami Township chooses to join, the township administrator would be the point person as well as one of his assistants. So that was a very brief overview of the center. A lot of information all at once, so I appreciate your patience, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from Mr. White.
I wanted to thank TJ for coming up. I did ask him to come up just to give an overview of the organization. We've participated through the Leadership Academy with their organization as we were looking at the scope of all of the memberships that the township is part of. This was certainly one organization that I felt offers a wide breadth of services that we could potentially utilize and potentially could, you know, save us some significant dollars in, in terms of trying to go, you know, even conducting some of the surveys and collecting some of the data alone that they, they already have access to through this group, so.
So I have a couple of questions. So you said you have a fully insured health insurance program available to governments that participate?
Self-insured.
Self, fully self-insured, so it's, and how long has that been in existence?
The Center for Local Government benefits pool started in two thousand and nine. Prior to that, it actually was fully insured purchasing consortium. Our pool exists within a bar group called Jefferson Health Plan, which is also a health agency in Ohio primarily with school districts. And so that plan has been in existence much longer than the five first stages.
So if we were to be interested in that, is there a grace period? Do we have to apply? Are we automatically in? How does that work?
You have to apply. There would be an underwriting process, and then the members of the pool, if the government passes the underwriting process, not voting in. I would say in history, the pool, no government has passed the underwriting process and applied is not voted in. and not voted in, so that's second step's really important.
So basically, if we have a clean health record, we don't cost too much, then you let us in?
I had one other question for the chief. Chief, are you aware of these judgmental use of force simulators, and is that something that you think your department would benefit from?
We actually have one that we got agreed on last year for doing this. Excuse, we do a lot of that. Those type of scenarios already, we always look for ways to train, so we never say no. Anything to make it better?
Any other questions? Mr. White, thank you for coming in. That's appreciated.
Oh, and I have a couple of labels for copies for any officers that I can just, if you'd be willing to assist.
Thank you. All right, I will make a motion, if there's no other questions on this presentation, to adjourn the work session at 6:51. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morris.
Hi.
Mr. Posey.
Hi.
Mr. Colb.
Hi.
I will adjourn the meeting at 6:52.